Okay, we're back in session at 6:54 PM and no final action decision or vote was taken while the board was in closed session. We're going to move on to item 5A, consider and take possible action to approve the 2018-2019 contract for chief financial officer as discussed in closed session.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Canoyer? Second, Mr. Macias. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries six to zero. We'll move on to item 2A, consider and take action regarding approving the use of purchasing cooperatives as a method of procurement for Phase Two and Three of the re-roofing projects. Dr. Montoya.
Again, this is a process that districts use, but Mr. Alisondo, if you want to explain it and what it'll do for the district.
Yes, sir. Typically for construction projects, which this is what we consider this to be when we're going to re-roof a school, we had asked the board as a default to select something that's called the request for competitive seal proposal method whenever we're going to get prices to do those kind of projects. Takes a little bit longer to do that, but we feel typically it's going to give us the best value for the district. However, these particular roofs, we're on a very strict timeline with the insurance company to complete these roofs so that we can settle with them. And so when we were looking at the different vehicles that we can use to receive pricing for these types of projects, the cooperative, the purchasing cooperatives is what we're thinking would be the best, would serve our, the district's purpose the best. Now, we use co-ops now a lot, but we don't use them for construction typically. So when we looked at the purchasing co-ops that we're able to use, we know that one of the vendors that we're currently using that's doing some roofing projects for us is on the cooperatives, as well as many other companies. So we know that just based on the fact that we like the work this particular vendor's doing, that they do have quality vendors on those cooperatives. It's not just people who can't get work anywhere else. So what we're going to, what we're asking the board is to give us permission to use this method to get pricing on these particular projects. Once we receive the pricing, we'll evaluate it, make sure the vendors are good quality, the pricing seems reasonable based on what we're doing right now. And if it does, then we'll bring something to the board to actually approve contracts for these particular projects. The reason we're also so interested in this is because the insurance company has told us that they would like to settle with us. They want this off their books. And in order, and to do that, they're willing to pay a premium because it affects them in many ways, it impacts their business. And it's not only Judson, they have a lot of other clients that have claims with them as well. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about this when we get into the budget discussion in a few minutes, but that's what we're asking at this point is that we allow, that you allow us to use this vehicle to get pricing. We'll evaluate it. If things don't come back the way we like it, then we will say, well, nope, we're going to have to go back a different way and go the old traditional method we do it. But if things work out okay, and like I said, only because we have roofs out there that are being repaired right now, we have a good basis for comparison to discern, determine whether we're getting good pricing. And if we'd like it, then we'll bring it to the board and ask y'all to approve it and let us move forward.
Would there still be the same safeguards that like it wouldn't exceed our deduct, you know, the agreed-upon amount from the insurance company and everything?
As far as whenever we issue the contract to the contractor, those amounts will be guaranteed, whatever, we'll have performance bonds and payment bonds to make sure that if they can't do it for the price they promised or anything, then we'll go against our bonding company to get the projects finished. As far as with the insurance company, we're going to negotiate with them what pricing we, we're going to show them these two prices and say, hey, this is what it's going to cost us for these roofs to be repaired. And negotiate with them and hopefully that we'll end up with, on the good side of that. If not, then we're going to just wait and tell them we can't settle now, we're going to have to just wait. They gave us until May of 19 to finish the projects, but if we take a settlement before then, then we may be able, like I said, to end up with a little bit extra funding potentially. Okay? Sure.
And Mr. Alisondo, you said this is the first time we've implemented this strategy?
For, for construction programs that I can recall, yes, sir.
Okay. And it still follows our, does it need to follow the typical procurement process for all of that stuff?
Yes, sir. Those cooperatives, when companies submit proposals to the cooperatives, they're replying to their requests for proposals. So they're evaluated and everything else, just like we would, but they're doing it. And now we're relying on what the work they did to get the pricing that they're giving us through those cooperatives.
And will we see it again once you?
Definitely. We will not award contracts without coming to the board, and the board will actually approve that we award contracts to whoever we select.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do need a motion in a second. I apologize.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Canoyer, second. Mr. La Foyle. All in favor?
What are your motions?
Well, it's consider and take action, and I had forgotten the motion. I jumped right into discussion and I apologize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. 3A fiscal year 2019 budget preparation discussion. Dr. Montoya.
Again, this will be a continuation of the budget process that this district uses through the CFO and the budget department. And of course, there'll be other meetings between now and the next two, three months as this budget gets prepared with a goal of finishing it at the end of June at the latest. But Mr. Alisondo, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Montoya. As Dr. Montoya mentioned, this is one of the meeting, many meetings that we're going to have before we actually adopt a budget for next school year. And we held our first meeting last month, and so approximately four weeks ago. And so we're, this is our second meeting, and we're going to do a little bit of a refresher and then just continue the discussion and of course, try to answer any questions that y'all may have, and then kind of tell you what the next steps are as we continue moving forward to the next meeting, which will be approximately another month. But we're only, again, like we did at the last meeting, we're only going to focus on the general operating fund, which is really the fund where we're having some financial issues in. Child nutrition is fine, the debt service fund, which pays for the bonds, not a problem. So we will bring those budgets to you because they are required to be approved by the board, but it may not be the next meeting, but the meeting after that. And those are very, they're not difficult budgets to discuss. If you recall at the last meeting, we presented this particular slide, and this particular slide shows you that, just as a refresher, that this is a, these numbers are all with a no tax rate increase. So it's the same tax rates that we have right now. And at the bottom, it indicates to you, the first column, that scenario one shows you there's no property value increase, which we feel after discussions that we've had with the Barrett County Appraisal District, that that's not going to be the case for this next coming year. So we're more between the 3% and the 5%, so between scenario two and three. But to be conservative for tonight's discussion, we're going to just stay with scenario number two, which is a 3% property value increase. And so there, you'll see that at the very beginning, the first row just shows that we're going to start off with approximately a $43 million fund balance. And our revenue forecast for next year would be approximately $184.8 million and expenditures at $197.7 million. And those expenditures include, excuse me, those expenditures include opening two new elementary schools, one of them which will open at the beginning of the year, which will be Escondido, and the other, which is where the Moaks, which will open in the middle of the year in January. And also adding the final grade, the sixth, the 12th grade for Veterans Memorial High School. If we look at those numbers, you'll see that the expenditures are exceeding revenues, the forecast, about $13 million, which means that we have a shortfall. So our expenditures are larger than our revenues by $13 million approximately. And if we were to do absolutely nothing and those numbers were correct, those forecasts, then our fund balance would go from $43 million at the beginning of the year to $30 million at the end of the year. Now, the board has a fund balance policy, which states that we can, we cannot go below a 17%, which is two months' worth of operating fund balance. That number's approximately $34 million. So if we were to look at scenario number two and say, we're going to go with that particular scenario, the board would have to take some action first to say that we know that we're going to change or go against our fund balance policy. So we'll continue to have discussions because obviously we don't want that to happen. I'm going to move over to the next slide, which is basically the same information. The only difference is that here, oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, yes, ma'am.
Have questions in the middle?
Absolutely, yes, please do so.
At what point is Barrett County designed with what property value is that we're going to be?
Sure. I'm going to cover that in two slides, but I'll tell you right now that the first estimate this year falls on April the 30th. So the first-
You said this year, so do we?
Yes, correct. Yep. And I'm going to show you in a minute the timeline, kind of for some elections and stuff. No, that's, that's, you're right on, just a little bit ahead, but we're right, right on target. So this next slide shows you basically the same information. The only change here is that we incorporated a five cent tax rate increase. And this particular increase, there's no magic to it or anything like that. The only reason we use this number is because our neighboring school district said, hey, we're considering a five cent tax increase. So we kind of said, okay, well, what would that do for us? That number can go anywhere between zero, no tax rate increase, or 13 pennies. And whatever you do, other than a zero, you have to go to the voters to ask them to approve increasing the tax rate. And I'm going to cover that in just a moment as well. So if we were to do that, if the board decided and the voters decided that yes, it's okay to do that, and you looked at scenario number two, you would see that that $13 million negative number, which was 12.9, goes to $4 million. So in essence, saying that if you did nothing else except just raise a tax rate increase and the property values increased by 3%, you would have a $4 million deficit. So your fund balance would theoretically go from $43 million to $39 million in that year. Okay? And of course, you can see the next scenario, number three, at the higher property, at the 5% value, that if that same situation happened at 5% property tax value increase, you would end up with a $1.9 million shortfall. Okay? So I'm going to keep going. Any questions on this particular slide? If not, if something comes back in a minute, we can definitely come back to it. It's not a very lengthy presentation, hard point presentation, so we can come back to it pretty quick. On this particular slide, again, just reviewing with, from last meeting, it's showing you the effect of that five cent tax rate increase on the homeowners. So on that first column where it says $90,000, the annual difference would be to the homeowner approximately $32.50. Now, just for full disclosure, if somebody has a home that's worth $90,000 right now and the Barrett Appraisal District comes back and on average says, we're going to do a 3% increase, that $90,000 home is going to be $92,700. So that $32.50 is going to increase slightly. I mean, we're talking a few more dollars, so maybe from $32.50, it'll go up to $35. So at the last column where we were selling a $200,000 home, it goes up 3%. It'll be $6,000 from $87.50, it'll go maybe to $90 for the year. I just want to be, you know, just really transparent about that. I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, you didn't take this into consideration. I'm going to move on to the next slide. And so this again was a slide from last time, and it was just showing you, again, just as a reminder of our enrollment in ADA. And if you look at year 2017, 2018, you know, and I'm sorry, if you go back a little bit to 2014, 15, we were at 23,292 students enrollment. And based on the demographers and what we, the typical growth that we would have expected by 17, 18, we would have been at the 24,000 student level already, for enrollment. So you can see that every year since 14, 15, we've been losing students. And this year, you know, we don't know exactly how many we're going to lose, but you can tell that based on those numbers, we are losing a little bit of students. Not a lot, not as we did in the past, but we're still declining. I'm going to move on if that's okay? All right. So this is kind of new, new items that we're going to discuss a little bit. So the first one we talked about is that five cent tax rate increase. And when we do that with that 3% property value, we're looking at increasing values about $8.9 million. And that's why, when y'all saw that, we went down from $12.9 million as a deficit to about $4 million, that's because of that $8.9 million that we would generate in additional revenue if the voters were to approve a five cent tax rate increase. There's also another option that we're looking at right now that has to do with the item we just talked about, the insurance funds for the hail damage roofs. And I'll talk a little bit about this, and I don't have a number out there, but I'm going to give you just an idea. And actually today, right before the meeting, at around 6:05, 6:09, I got, I received a phone call from our bond attorney because I had posed a question to them. I sent them an email asking them about their legal opinion on something, and they, he verbally replied, and I said, well, I just need it in writing to make sure that I have it for my files. And that is that when we, when the board approved the bond election for May of 2016, there were several campuses that were slated to have roofs replaced. And in April, about a month before that election, we had that hail storm. And so my question to him, because what we started doing for these roofs that we're currently working on right now, that were included in that bond, we're using the insurance proceeds to pay for that damage. So my question was to him is, are we legally able to use the bond proceeds? Because that's what we told the voters we were going to do, and leave those insurance proceeds in the general operating fund so we can use for any other purpose. And so his answer luckily was yes, you guys can definitely do that. The voters approved that you do that as far as using bond money to prepare those roofs, so you definitely can do that. And so we're going to go back and evaluate where we are with that, but we're thinking we're going to be about $3 million right there, that we can say that was slated to be paid out of bond money, we're going to pay those out of bond money, and we're going to try, and we're going to keep those insurance proceeds in the general fund, and that'll help offset whatever number we come up with in the budget. It'll be $3 million approximately of additional revenues that we can use. Now, obviously, it's a one-time thing, so it'll help us for this next school year, but then after that, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do. Yes, ma'am?
Would you repeat again? That would be roughly $3 million, is it?
Yes, and that's a estimate right now because I need to really work with the facilities folks to see how much we can, how much, how much we can really take from there. $3 million, I think is a conservative number, but just to give you an idea. Now, a minute ago, or a few minutes ago, I mentioned to you that the reason we wanted to do these cooperative purchasing method, method for getting the pricing on the roofs is because, again, the insurance company wants this claim off of their balance sheet. And so, so far, they have sent us a check for $10 million and, or actually a check, it was a wire that they sent us for $10 million, and they're sending another one in the next couple of days for $19 million. So once we finish everything, what we're hoping is that once we, what we don't, what I don't want to do and we don't want to do is use the money the insurance company's going to give us before fixing the roofs, because then we're going to have a problem later, because those roofs have to be fixed. And if you don't fix them and there's some more damage to them later, the new insurance company's going to say, wait a minute, those roofs were damaged, we're not covering them. So we need to make sure we fix the roofs, and we don't want, you know, anything to happen to our facilities anyway, so we need to take care of that. However, there is an opportunity, and we know based on some comments we've heard with some of the neighboring districts, to potentially end up with some excess funds from the hail. And we would have to, and the way that would work is that we would get the true pricing on how much it would be for these roofs, and we would nail that number down with the contractor and make sure we had contracts with them, and we would negotiate with the insurance company for a seven amount. And of course, any difference that was in between what we can negotiate with them and what it's going to cost will be additional funding that we could use for something else. So we're hoping that once we're done with this, and we're, and it's going to be 30 to 45 days at the very least before we know if we have other funds that we can count on. So we're hoping that that number would increase, maybe, you know, I don't know, I can dream. I'll just say for a minute, maybe it'll go up to $8 million. So if we decided, you know what, we don't want to do the tax rate right now, maybe we're going to get this $8 million from somewhere else. Again, it's a one-time thing, and we'll have to wait to see what the legislature does for the year after that, and then kind of determine how we want to go. Because from the administration's point of view, and I'm not sure about the board, but I would gather the property tax rate increase is kind of the last thing that we would like to do. We don't really want to go there if we can possibly avoid it. But if we need it and we decide not to do that, there's going to be other things that are going to be painful that we may have to do in lieu of doing that tax rate increase. If we're able to get these insurance funds and make sure the roofs get fixed and we have excess money, that's going to be an easy one, where we know we can use that and we'll be okay, and we don't have to make some of those tougher decisions quite at this time. But I'm hoping that by the next time we meet, I can give you a better idea. We'll have some, some pricing in from these, from the, for the roofs for Phase Two and Three, and I can give you better ideas to where we are with those additional funds that we may have for that. But like I said, it's going to take some negotiation, and it's, we're looking at at least 30 to 45 days before we get a good number there for you. That's why I didn't fill the number in there. Just wanted to let you know that that's coming. There may be some good news. We know for sure that there will be some for sure, $3 million, and then after that, we'll see how much more we can add to that. Okay? Now, as far as the tax ratification election, this goes back to the question that you asked Ms. Rodriguez a little bit ago. This, and I included some documents in your board book that were from TASB, which is in case you want to really dig, you know, dwell down and read all the details about it. But there are two memos that, one memo and one other document that has to be released, kind of helping school districts, as they do every year, with this tax ratification election. And there are two different ways to do it. You can either do an early tax rate adoption, or you can do the normal, one at the normal election time. But I just wanted to cover this one with you because if we get to a point that y'all decide, no, we need to do the tax rate, I just wanted to be, so y'all can kind of just be thinking about this and know the timeline. So April the 30th by law is when the Barrett County Appraisal District has to give us their estimated taxable property values for next year. Now, that, those are not the certified values. The certified values, which are like their final, final number, are not due to us till July 25th, which is way after our budget adoption. But we can use the estimate, that's because that's what's allowed in law, to be able to do one of these early tax ratification elections if we so decide. So April the 30th, we would receive the, the numbers. On May the 1st, the day right after, we would have to publish in the newspaper that we're going to do, have a public hearing to talk about the tax rate. And then on the 11th, which is 10 days after, which is what the rule says, you have to wait at least 10 days, we could actually have the public hearing. And this public hearing is very similar to the ones that I would do when we do the budget adoption and tax rate, except we wouldn't do the budget portion of it, we would just talk about the tax rate. And at that night, the board may, could also adopt the tax rate that we're going to be talking about. So if we said we're going to go at 5 cents, y'all would adopt the new rate and order the actual election to be held. And then on waiting the number of days, and of course, there's a lot of work we would have to do with the county and things like that to make sure we get everything set up, but the actual election day would be on June the 12th. And then we'd have to wait a certain number of days before we could canvas, which would be June the 18th. So if we wanted to go that fast-track method to do the tax rate ratification election, that's possible, and this is, this is kind of the timeline that you would have to do it in. Any questions about that? Sure.
I know that there are other districts who are talking about doing this. Are they looking at this in your discussions and what you've heard? Are they looking at this same timeframe or are they doing?
I know, I know there's one district that I've talked to that is looking at this early, early rate, early adoption. The other district based, I didn't talk, I didn't speak to them, but based on, if the newspaper was accurate, it was, they were looking at just the normal election date in November, because they said that they would really be looking at it for, if not for 18, 19, for the 19, 20 school year. Right? But I mean, we can definitely speak to them and say, hey, what is, what are y'all's plans really? Are you going to, when are you going to do it? So we can come back with better information about that. Sure. I mean, they may not actually do what they tell me, but at least I can share with you what they told me they were going to do. I'm going to go on to the next slide.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right. When we did all these bonds, we promised-
I'm loud enough.
Yeah, but it's recorded.
Can you hear me? We promised the voter no tax increases.
Well, when we-
What are they going to say about that?
When we, first of all, they are two separate things. We have the general operating, and then we have the bonds. But the last bond that we did, which was for the Phase Two of Veterans Memorial High School, we said no tax rate increase, or no, we actually said 2 cents tax rate increase for that one. And that one's not going to be a problem. That's, as a matter of fact, we may not even need to do the 2 cent tax rate increase because, just again, full disclosure, a lot of times, we don't have to increase our tax rates because the property values keep going up. And so when you're looking at debt service, your tax rate could even go down, like this past year, we lowered our tax rate because the property values went up so high that we could lower our rate. Now, in 2016, the last one, the last election we did, we told the voters at that time too, and I don't, I'm going to say a number here, and I hope I don't, I think it was 6 cents, I think, if I remember correctly. But anyway, we told the voters that on the May, when we did the May election, which was the huge 200 and something million dollars, that there was going to be a tax rate increase for that, and it was going to be, I don't remember exactly right now off the top of my head, but there was going to be a tax rate increase for that. So for these last two bonds, we have not told the voters that we were not going to do a tax rate increase. And I can tell you though, that because of property value increases, our tax rate increases have, well, we haven't had one yet, and they will be less than what we anticipated because of the property values going up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I'm going to move forward. Okay. So the, again, this is just a slide saying that the other way you can do the tax ratification election is just doing it like you typically would, and the election would be in November with the regular, you know, when we have regular elections. And of course, that would be too late for our budget. And if we were to count on that and the voters were to say, no, we're not, you can't have it, then we would either know that we're going to hit fund balance really hard because we didn't have the resources coming in, or we'd have to start doing some serious cutting at that point in time to, you know, for the remaining part of the year to bring the balance, to bring the expenditure budget down. Okay. So that's talking a little bit about the revenue side of the general operating fund. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about the expenditure side, because this is really where we, as a cabinet, spend a lot more time talking about, because there are so many expenditures in our budget and things that maybe we can help control a little bit. So the very first item that's up there is that hiring freeze. And what's happened is really HR, Marco staff, Marco and his staff have looked at some of the positions that have been vacant for a while and said, hey, you know, if it's the time of the year and you haven't filled it, and it's not a high need position, then we're going to maybe continue to leave it vacant for the rest of this year. And even if they have, if they haven't, if they're coming available now, they may evaluate and say, hey, do we need to hire a permanent employee, or we can hire a temporary for the rest of the year? Depending on what it is, some of them, you can't do that, or you don't want to do that. You really want a person in there that's going to be a permanent. And, but there may be some where you can play around a little bit and say, yeah, we'll hire a temp throughout, you know, for the end of the year, it'll save us a little bit of money. Now, the reason that's important is because that fund balance I was talking about earlier, your savings account at the end of the year, well, the less you spend now, even though it's in the year prior to the budget we're talking about, then your savings gets a little bit higher, a little bit bigger. So if we do have to hit that savings account, that fund balance account, there's more money in there, and you'll be able to, you know, the district will be better off financially the more money that's in there to offset any deficit that we may budget for. So on the next bullet, we talk about travel, we talked about state travel. And one of the travels that was easy to kind of make a decision about was out-of-state travel, saying that any out-of-state travel even now has to go through Dr. Montoya's office for approval by the superintendent, and just saying, you know what, we're not going to do anymore as employees, if it, or at least for next year, while we're having these issues, unless it's something that's absolutely required, like there's sometimes for impact aid, where we have to go to something for impact aid, or there may be one Title I, one that we have to go to, that would be the only thing. And those typically are paid, like title, they're paid out of title funds anyway. And impact aid, that one's not paid out of impact aid funds, but unless it's absolutely mandatory that we do it, we would say, we're not traveling out of state. And we're having discussions about even traveling within the state. What can we do to control those costs so that we know there's some things that have to happen, but, you know, what, what rules can we put in place? And it gets really complicated because every time we think we figured it out, somebody says, well, what about? And you're like, oh, yeah, that's an exception too. So we're still working on trying to come up with some rules to do that, to try to minimize how we can control travel costs even within the state. That next bullet, which is really the most difficult one to deal with, has to do with our staff throughout the entire district, looking at all the different positions and saying, what positions can we put on hold for a year? Maybe we can share, one employee can be shared between two departments, and one position Maybe we can share, uh, one employee can be shared between two departments and one position can be put on hold for a year until we can work through this or to maybe if necessary. Um, and what positions do we have that we can say, you know, we're gonna do a program change, we're gonna have a different strategy as to how we're gonna tackle this and we're gonna eliminate those positions. And right now, those positions that you're seeing up there, the majority of them, uh, I think out of those, truthfully, all of them, correct me if I'm wrong, Marco, I don't think any of them are at the campuses yet, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, none of those positions are campus positions yet. We're trying to stay, like I said, we, we try to leave those for the very end. So, and we still have two departments to go through, uh, by departments, I mean cabinet areas that we haven't covered yet, that we'll be doing in the next week or two to try to look at what other positions that are out there that we can discuss. And we will bring those to you. Please don't think that we're not gonna share with you which positions they are. We just don't wanna do it yet. Uh, but more than likely at our next meeting, uh, which is at the end of April, we will be bringing you a, a listing of those positions so the board can start to review them and ask us questions about how we plan to move forward if we put them on hold or, or eliminate them and what our different strategies are gonna be. But eventually, as y'all know, um, they're probably, depending on how things work out with all these other revenue sources that we're trying to get, uh, because that's a big determinant as to how much we have to cut. And the board may say, hey, you know what, we're okay with adopting, and I'm just throwing this as an example, so don't. We're okay with adopting a budget that has a four million dollar deficit, knowing we're gonna hit it, but just don't eliminate so many positions if we have other revenue sources and things like that. And we'll have those discussions as we get to a point. Um, and even when we look at identifying positions that we're gonna put on hold or freeze, the board may say, nope, not this one, not that one. Then we'll come to the board and say, well, at this point, we're at this amount of a deficit. Do we look elsewhere or are we okay with that? So we'll look for some guidance from the board there. But eventually, there, there are a couple of things and that we've preliminary talked about and then again, we'll share with them in detail at the next meeting about changing some things that we're doing at the campuses, which would affect some campus staff. Uh, but again, I really, we don't have that number, it's not embedded in there. And we will be a hundred percent transparent when we bring those numbers to you is exactly to, so you know exactly what's gonna happen there. Anybody have a question about that? Yes, ma'am.
Just for fairness, the difference between number one and number three, I'm wondering if, like, bullet number one is cases that are already, you mean is already. And bullet number three, you mean like, whether it's a percentage that's being eliminated or.
Um, not all of them. So I'll give you an example, and I think this is a, an example that I can share because it's not really impacting anybody. So we tasked the transportation department to say, hey, this is what we're doing with the schools next year. We're doing this with the escondido, we're doing this with them, this is kinda how we're thinking because this is before the board approved the boundaries. This is how we think we're gonna do the boundaries. This is what we're looking at, changing for the transportation for early college about picking up students at their home high school instead of at the neighborhoods. If you take and look at all these things, look at your routes, what can we do, what can we save? So they came back and said, hey, there's, I don't, I think it's seven, was it seven? Seven bus driving positions that we don't need anymore because we don't, we're not gonna need those seven routes. So that's an easy one because they're, you know, we don't have, they're vacant, uh, and we're not gonna need them. So those are, there's some like that that were real simple. They're like, okay, we're not gonna affect anybody here. But not all of them are like that. Some of them. Oh, yes. Definitely. They're, they're all, um, itemized out and telling you if there's somebody currently in the position or if it's vacant, um, and explaining why we think we can eliminate it or share the job or anything like that. Yep, definitely. And that'll be Marco next week. No, but, uh, no, we'll all do it next, next, uh, next meeting. And the last one on here that is on this, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
You can go ahead and finish and then I'll make my comment.
Okay, sure. And the last one on here that we have for now, like I said, we're still not finished by any means, thinking about what other things we can do. And the HVAC, so we have certain set points for the HVAC as to how cool or hot we make the buildings and at what times those temperatures change. And that, um, can be a big savings for the school district. And they actually gave me some numbers and I just didn't put them up there because I said, we need to go back and review it. But I wanna say it was between eight hundred to, between eight hundred thousand, about eight hundred thousand dollars and maybe a little more. And so we wanna just go back and, and that came from the energy management department. They're the ones who provided the estimates. But we wanna go back and discuss that and then discuss it with the board and say, this is kinda the savings that this would, um, that this would net, but this is what's gonna have to happen in order for those savings to be actualized and then, or realized. And then the board can say, yeah, that's good or, you know, we're concerned. And there are all, these things are gonna be obviously just considerations that we're doing, bring to the board discussing so we can know what things the board's gonna be comfortable with doing and things that, that they're not gonna be, you all are not gonna be comfortable with doing. And there may be some things that the board is not gonna be comfortable with doing, but still is gonna say, we don't like it, but we understand we need to go forward and do this. So, and same thing, we're having the same issues because there's some things we're putting on the list that we don't wanna do, but it's just what's necessary. Yes, ma'am.
It's just a comment. Because I just had one main question for Dr. Montoya. Uh, I wanted to know if we were gonna get any information tonight on where the cabinet and staff and all those other departments were gonna make some cuts and Mr. Elizondo said. So what you're saying to us tonight is right now, we're still early in the game. But at the next meeting, you're going to have something more concrete to give to us as to where other departments are being looked at and, um.
And the cabinet.
And the cabinet. So that we don't have to have a tax hike.
Sure, sure.
Because, you know, as a representative of the taxpayers, we don't, as elected officials, we don't wanna have to tell them.
And, uh, and Ms. Michelle, in, in all honesty, the cabinet has put on the table cutting certain departments, staff positions, as well as the actual cabinet, certain positions. So, so that's still on there.
I'm sorry?
We'll know that.
At the next meeting on April, the, uh, April 25th meeting is when we're gonna share that. And we, and, and Mr. Garcia already has a list and we've been, the 1.1 million is not a number that we just made up. We actually have gone through positions and said, this is what they are, this is how much they cost. And he, so he actually has a preliminary list. But before we present to the board, we wanna make sure that we discuss it a few more times and, but when we meet on 25th, you will have a list that will itemize everything.
I appreciate that. I wanted to hear you all's recommendations.
Comment, when we say cutting, are we referring to attrition positions or are we referring to non-renewal of contracts?
Both. Some of those are gonna be, um, we, our goal is always, I mean, and we are a hundred percent committed to this, is that we never wanna leave anybody without a job. So anytime that we're going to cut a position where there's a person in that position, we're always gonna try to find somewhere else to place them through attrition because there's a vacancy somewhere else that, that we can't do away with that position, but we're gonna take this person and put him over there. Now, I'm not gonna lie to you and say, and tell you here that that's gonna be 100% of the case because there will be some individuals potentially that they may not want that other position. They may not wanna go back to a campus or whatever and that's gonna be a decision they're gonna have to make, whether they wanna continue to have employment at Judson or not, if that's what the board agrees with, with doing. So all this obviously is gonna be, we're gonna make recommendations, final decisions in your, you know, authorities, y'all's to.
Sure, and I just, I guess my concern is with non-renewal of term or probationary contracts, we're gonna run into a timeline.
Yes, and we've.
And so attrition would obviously be the ideal.
Yes.
So as people resign because they've been promoted or selected for other, other districts, um, that'd be.
Definitely, definitely.
The best choice.
Most definitely. And we have had one or two conversations with, uh, with legal about those timelines to make sure that we don't, uh, we definitely don't wanna get into any kind of a situation there.
I think the board ought to lead the way and take a cut in their funding that they get.
Agreed.
I agree a hundred percent on that though. Just take a thousand dollars, go back down to four.
And that's happened before, yeah, the board didn't, I think, a few years ago, more than a few years ago. I think the, the board's travel budget was six thousand dollars. And I think that year, I think, uh, you did either one or two thousand dollars decrease, something like that. I don't remember exactly, I had to go back and look at my notes, but, but, but the board has done that at one time.
When did it go up to what it is now, so to find out?
I think that year that it was cut, I think originally, if, I can go back and look at my notes, but I think originally the board had, were receiving six thousand dollars. Their proposal was to reduce it to four thousand dollars. And then they said, well, four thousand is maybe not enough. And we said, okay, we agreed on fifth, on five thousand, and said, that's where it's gonna stay.
Well, some of us turn back money every year.
That's true. Very true.
Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Macias, I apologize.
Do, um, I guess since you guys already know, uh, the positions that you're identified under the 1.1 million, you need another month just to kinda massage the numbers, is that?
There's a couple of things, yes, sir. Um, we've, haven't covered all the cabinet areas yet. There's two cabinet areas still that we need to discuss because we've, we, it, I said, it's not easy to get to these. And so when we start talking about a particular position, unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure, it takes us a long time before we say, okay, we all agree that whether we like it or not, we're okay to put that position on the list. And so there are still two areas that we need to, two cabinet areas that we need to go through and discuss their departments. So, um, so that number is gonna get, it's gonna get larger. But yes, we do have positions identified that make that number up, but we still have more to go through.
Okay, um, I haven't heard, um, a couple of things. One, we did initiate an internal audit of HR with the entire expectation that it would be part of the conversation during budgets. So has that information been used in this, um, recommendation that might be coming down next month? Have you leveraged that data or we received any information?
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna let, if you don't mind, Mr. Garcia answer that because he's working directly with Mr. Gibson. And so I think they just had their preliminary conversation, but I'll let him kinda see if he has a timeline.
Yes, sir, we just, uh, we initiated the, the conversation that, uh, with them, the, the audit.
How far back?
Uh, uh, the previous board meeting is when we had that conversation. They've asked us for all the data, that's due April 13th. But the timeline that they have presented us is that the, uh, presentation of the board would be approximately August.
Yeah, that's, that's a little late.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's very late.
But, but they've outlined the deadlines and, uh, they've informed us that they're making it as expedient as possible.
Now, these are the recommendations that the board had brought forth?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, um, going further, I, I know that we have a, a large professional development budget and that's something that obviously we'll take a, a stronger look at to see if there's any funding. Is that part of any of this discussion in terms of looking at what that is?
We will look at all of it before we, you know, come to the board. But as overall, when we're talking about a professional department, uh, professional development budget. Their budget for that professional development is not very large. It's, it's very small, actually, to be very honest with you. Uh, but a lot of it, you know, there are departments that bring in consultants for other reasons and things like that. So we will look at all of those items. But just so that you, when you see the actual professional department budget listing, you'll see that their budget is very, very small. Uh, and I, I better not guess the number right now, but, uh, it's not, you know, it's not anything large at all. But in everybody's budget, so like I said, sometimes they will say, well, we're gonna hire a consultant to come in and do this or that for us. So we'll identify all those as well, as much as we possibly can.
We, we wanna be efficient. I mean, the writing is on the wall. We're, eventually, if we continue on this path, having, we're gonna have to look at a tax rate increase. I mean, is it, so again, if, if I'm gonna go to the community and try to say, sell the legitimacy of the tax rate, I wanna be able to say that we're efficient at every aspect of what we're doing, which means that we're offering professional development that's relevant, not just because we have to do it and that we're looking at our options to do things online or any other module that would give that professional development or do it internally. Don't be, bring people outside, have that function done. And so I know those are all cost-saving measures, uh, so that needs to be explored. Um, one of the thing is, how much do we spend on out of state, uh, funding? Is there a physical dollar amount?
There is obviously, but I just don't know it off the top of my head right now. I can definitely get it for you.
I can't imagine it being astronomical. We, we put controls already.
Yeah, you, you're right, but it's more of, it's more of, some of these things are not gonna be a large dollar amount, but it's more of the idea that, hey, anything that you're gonna get out of state for our employees, you can typically get it here, uh, within the state. Any, there are very few exceptions that you can get your training that you need here within the state. And so it's, it's, some of these are gonna be symbolic, but it is that, hey, if we're gonna save 20 or 30,000 dollars, we're gonna save, that's one position, we don't have to cut. And so, uh, we're gonna do as much as we can to get to what you're talking about, about the operating efficiently. A lot of the training that is required is, it happens here in San Antonio, Region 20. And so there is no reason to go, or even in Austin, through Region 13 is really, for the majority of the things that need to happen, you can get them right here, no further than going to Austin.
Well, I would just kinda, I mean, I, I like symbolism, but I mean, I want it to be real. I would like to know how much we're spending. I know you'll bring that information to us, but I just can't see it being that, that much. And then the other thing about, uh, HVAC, is that something, um, are you talking? I think I've heard you mention about turning it on, off. Is it just that part of it?
No, what happens is, um, during the day when, let, just as an example, when we're here in this building, we, you know, when the building is empty, the air conditioning turns off at, and I'm just gonna give, give you some examples.
Okay.
So let's say that at, you know, all employees leave, let's say by five o'clock in the afternoon, which is not true, but they leave at five o'clock in the afternoon. So at that time, we say, um, okay, well, we don't need to have the air conditioning set at 73 degrees. We can set it at 78 degrees or 79 degrees. Well, that temperature difference makes a huge difference in our electric bill.
Just like the, the home?
Right. And so that's what we're talking about is just saying, okay, at what time? And, and some of it has to do with, some of this has to do with custodians, when custodians work late. So we had to decide, okay, you know, do we leave the building set at 73 degrees till nine o'clock at night? Or is it okay to say, no, it's gonna be at 78 or 79 degrees, so it's gonna be a little uncomfortable, uh, for them because they're working, physically working. And is that okay with us to do that and telling them, hey, you know what, wear a little bit more comfortable clothing possibly, but we're gonna make the buildings a little bit warmer, um, those kinda things. Where at home, maybe you don't like to be at 79 or 80 degrees and you don't care. You put it down at 72 because you want it to be cool, but obviously, like you said, it costs money. And so we need to look at that because it really, uh, especially in the summertime, um, it, it, it just adds up. It, it, like I said, eight hundred thousand dollars just for making some changes to there. So, but we'll bring those thoughts to you as to what hours and what set points we're talking about, so you can give us an.
With an estimated dollar figure?
We said, yes, definitely. We said, we're thinking about eight hundred thousand, but we'll definitely give it to you in writing as to what it is.
I mean, all of these are fantastic in terms of it showing the effort collectively that's needed to save funding. But, um, I, I guess I, I want to still see that day reduction where we're taking our exempt employees and we're reducing their days. That's not part of this unless it's part of the eliminator places. So I, I'd like to see viably a reduction of five days of our employees. I, I, I think that would be helpful for the board to see what kinda savings. Because we've talked about our expenditures, personnel is 80% of our budget, or 79%. We're gonna see the biggest bang for our buck in personnel. So we need to see what a reduction of days looks like to, uh, look at, at, uh, our process here. The next thing is that I know that we spend about a million approximately on buses annually. And this might be the time where we shift strategy for the next three years to say, next bond, we put it on there to purchase bo, uh, buses. Am I, am I right? Is it about a million we spend or is it a little less?
It, it is about a million and it depends, uh, because the last time we purchased buses, we actually went on and, um, asked the bank for a loan because interest were very low. So for that particular loan, we're paying about 300,000 dollars a year and it's over like a five-year payout. So we kinda use some strategies a little bit to kinda make sure that we have the least minimal, the minimal impact on our budget in one time. But like for this year, we came to the board and said, hey, you know what? If you will allow us to purchase 20, 20, how many engines was it?
Two hundred and eighty-six thousand.
But it was 25 engines, I think?
No, sir, it was more like 13.
13 engines. Instead of buying buses that cost a hundred thousand dollars plus per bus, we said, well, if we can spend 200, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, uh, for 13 engines, we can put them, replace some buses that are still, the chassis are still in good shape, transmissions are in good shape. We're just gonna replace the engine. So we were able to get 13 buses on the road that we would've gone out and spent 1.3 million dollars on at 250,000 dollars plus 300,000, for example. So we're trying to do those things because we still need to make sure that the kids, and I'm gonna repeat something that I know you agree with, are riding safe school buses and that we're not having them break down the side of the road. So you're right, while we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how can we continue to get, make sure that happens all the time without necessarily spending all the money to buy new school buses every single year. So we also know that we were buying school, new school buses for Veterans Memorial. So right now, we're sending kids to Veterans Memorial and to Judson from the same neighborhoods. So we're having a bus go that way and a bus go this way. Once we, um, say, okay, all the kids are now at Veterans Memorial, we're not gonna be sending buses to Judson High School from those same neighborhoods. They're only gonna be going to Veterans Memorial. So a lot of those routes will be eliminated and those buses that we have will now be part of our fleet. And, and those were buses that we bought new, so they'll be part of, well, we typically would've said this was part of the replacement, which were new, we didn't get to replace old buses. Now we can really get rid of some of those older buses because these are now freed up. We don't have those buses going to both places. I know it sounds a little bit confusing.
So, so minimum, we're talking maybe saving 300,000 in, in expenditures for, um, out of our operating funds?
If we were to go the loan route, that's correct.
And, and maximum, we're looking at 1.3 million that we would maybe allocate for, for buses.
Correct.
So the, those, um, that request can actually come out of an, uh, infrastructure bond. Am I correct on that?
Sure, it's a board's philosophy and, and the voters approve, it's definitely something.
Which, when we're looking to save sizable amount, now that's sizable. We're not nickel and diming. We're, we got a 1.3 potentially that we're going to strategically ask voters, we don't wanna increase taxes, but please support our infrastructure bond three years from now. I think that's a sell and we'll be able to ride this out as we look at sustainability in the future. I, I have an issue and, and I want this to be real clear, with morale. Employees are, need to be valued and when you start talking about eliminating their positions now, it makes them nervous. They leave. And then we have to retrain employees, which costs more because we're retraining employees. We need to build some stability and we need to have other strategies that don't put the fear of, am I gonna have a job or am I going to be asked to do something different? We need to maintain the quality here. So I stress that is very important. So if that 1.15 million can be transferred to buses, that 1.3 million that we're gonna go to the community and ask for support, you don't have to eliminate positions unless, once the internal audit comes in August, states that we're inefficient in certain areas and that this can be the adjustment needed. I would much rather have that sophisticated approach done as we move forward. So just food for thought for my colleagues, but again, it's important that we keep morale high because we're not gonna give raises, at least I don't think that's a consideration this year, to give an employee raises, so, so then what? Um, unless you're gonna recommend it next month or something, and I, I don't know that.
I think, if you remember, I recommended not to do that last year.
That's why I'm, I'm saying that. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's no way to give raises.
And if we can't see that there, we're not gonna give raises this year, then I'm doing a terrible job of explaining the budget situation.
Well, again, what's the word? You never wanna assume, but I, I was certain that was your position. So, um, there's a lot left to be done, but certainly this is definitely a good start. Uh, and then the other last point is our substitute, uh, budget. Is that still pretty high?
Yes, sir. It, it is, it is high and we provided that information at the meeting we had last month and I'll be happy to bring it back again. Uh, it is high and some of it has to do exactly what you're saying a minute ago, that it has to do with morale and people being tired. Uh, and others, uh, it's just unfortunately, when you read about absenteeism across the entire state and across the entire country, uh, sometimes it's just, and I hate to just be blunt, but it's just a fact. it's just, and I hate to just be blunt, but it's just the fact, that you give people days to be off and pay them, they're going to take them. And that's just the way, that's just the way it is.
And Dr. Montoya, as a possibility, look at those incentives for keeping our teachers in the classroom and not having to use their sub-days. But, a lot more notes, but I think that's fine for right now, thank you.
Mr. Garcia, can you please remind me, how much are we paying for the internal audit, the HR audit?
They quoted approximately $44,000.
Okay, I just wanted to, I know we want for them to give us advice and how we can improve the budget or cut positions, and so I just wanted to make sure we, I just wanted to, well, that would be nice, $44,000 would be nice. I don't think that's going to happen. And then also, you know, just as a comment, if we're going to look at eliminating state travel, then as board members, we need to also look at eliminating state travel, and we have to lead the way and lead by example.
Out-of-state, you mean?
Out-of-state, yes, what did I say, in-state?
You said state.
Oh, I apologize. Out-of-state travel, just as food for thought. And then Mr. Macias brings up a good, a good point, to look at days, we have stipends, we have days, we have overtime, we have a lot of different places that I think if we would be a little more aware, that we could probably, right, we could be more conservative. And I, and something we're dealing with is stipends are not guaranteed year to year. And I don't know if we do a good job of explaining that to staff, that they're not a guarantee, and therefore above and beyond the duty day, and so what does that mean? And so that's just a conversation, we're not saying we're cutting anything, I don't want people to think that, but it's certainly conversations that I think we need to have. Yes, Mr. LaFouille?
When are they going to require us to have seat belts in these buses? It should be coming up real soon.
Definitely the law is coming up real soon. I don't know if they're going to have a grandfathering clause that says, for the old buses that you currently have, you don't have to have seat belts on those. I think that's going to be part of the law once it comes out, but from what I'm hearing, around July, August timeframe as well.
Well, how much is that going to increase our buses?
In terms of the budget to put seat belts on all the buses, if they say-
No, no, not the ones, the new ones we're ordering, wouldn't it be to our advantage to have seat belts in them?
I don't want to hazard a guess, Mr. LaFouille, I could go back and find out exactly, but I, we would have to determine how much it would be to put them on a bus and then add that price to the $95,000 we currently pay for gas-operated vehicles.
So that's money we really didn't want to spend, but it's the law.
Definitely. If they, if they pass that law and they don't grandfather it in, then we'll have no other recourse but to go back and have them placed on all the buses.
To speak to Dr. Salinas's point about internal audit, I believe we have how much allocated in our budget for internal audit, is it 60, 70, where are we? I'm under the impression that the 44 will be under budget for what we have allocated.
I think that it was $40,000 is what we-
So we're over budget by four?
Yes, sir.
I want to say it was higher, but I guess we'll confirm, I want to say it was $75,000 set aside for an audit that we're not, we're not using.
At one time, the budget was $75,000, but it was reduced last year to $40,000, if I remember correctly.
To 40, all right. Well, then, I would also contend too, that if we're more efficient in the HR, it should alleviate any potential for lawyers, lawyer fees, legal fees for grievances and all of, we're going to see a residual out of it, I have no doubt about it. My whole impact is within that 80% that we find inefficiencies, and we help save some dollars here.
Ms. Michelle?
Dr. Montoya, usually during this time, when we are working on budget and getting things ready for the next fiscal year, we have program reviews, correct?
Amen.
Where every department gives us a review of, it's really basically kind of wish list type things that each, I just want to recommend that we don't do that. I think that would be, that's just a waste of time, sir.
He's bringing it next month, right?
That, we don't need program reviews, we don't need a wish list of what every department wants, what we need is to-
Is the reality.
The reality, what is going to happen, that's what I want to see. I don't want to see a program review with every department saying, you know, police department, we need three more cars and two more officers. I want to see what do we actually need to do in order to have whatever that fund balance is going to be that we start with.
We can approach it that way, I think as a cabinet, rather than program review, which really is a wish list, let's be honest about it. You know, we need to just forget the wish list, let's say, here's the reality, and this is what we have to have, and move from that angle.
Well, I certainly have a different opinion on program reviews, being that I've gone through eight years' worth of them, it's made me much more insightful with the process,